I know what you're talking about. I bring this session, the council meeting dated one twenty nineteen eighty-six. Uh today's council meeting, we have some issues. We'll first go over the the uh tabled issues. We had two or we had a table discussion from last week. Oh, okay. You're you're leading it. You're leading it every time.
What's a pledge allegiance?
Yep, that's disrespectful.
I don't have a flag.
All right, thank you, everybody. I pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic.
For the republic, yeah, for which it stands. Come on, you got it. One nation under God. Indivisible, liberally and justice for all.
All right, thank you, everybody.
Falco, why'd that feel like Ashley let it?
Cause I was getting him to say it correctly.
You you were, even though I was ahead of you. Yeah, sorry, thumbs up for America, everyone.
Alright, so we had a table discussion about the
Could you introduce yourself, please?
From the podium.
I'll do it just cause I I brought it. I'll do it. I don't give two shit. Oh.
Well, I mean, you should care, sir.
Decorum, decorum, that's good.
You should care, sir, yes.
No, I I mean, I don't care. I don't care not to do it. I don't care to do it. It doesn't matter. I'll do whatever. Do whatever I can for the city. Alright, so um we had a table discussion. Chase Reeves, Mayor Chase Reeves. We had a table discussion about the rejuvenation of up north. Um, the council member is not present. I mean, we can continue discussion if we'd like. I would like him to be present. I know he had a meeting, I believe, at the mall to discuss many things. Uh I don't I don't know if that was particularly a topic, but I know he had a discussion with people, so um we can move we can move that till next week till he's here. But I did want to bring up a couple of things uh to the council um and to the city. After talking um to some people in the city and obviously last council meeting, I do want to help rejuvenate up north. So I'm going to be working with um working on a grant system for businesses uh up north. Um, I gotta iron out all the paperwork and all the details, but the idea will be uh five businesses will be uh opened up up north. There will be uh an open invitation for everybody to come down and 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 give their business ideas to the BBB or whatever. And then the top five will be picked and then their ba- their business will basically be funded by the city. Um, that'll be that'll be in place to help rejuvenate up north. I know there's a lot of interest up north. Um, I believe business is required to keep people uh to retain people um in the city. And that'll be one step that we're gonna move forward. Um, also, uh given the certain circumstances that happened in my private life, I would like to make sure that uh I continue um that I finish my time here in front of the council and for the people and complete my legislative uh plan. So in the coming weeks, there will be um legislation put forward to move forward the government that will in include, but not limited to um a commission for gambling uh and and sports because boxing is is coming back and I've had Jilly um himself has talked about it league, um and I wanna make sure that's to board, so we'll talk about that. And obviously, obviously, the aviation stuff that we've been speaking about previously. Um, there'll be some other initiatives that I'm thinking about for the people. There might be a loan system. I have to figure this out. Um, but the idea is a loan system for possible housing, um at least some kind of government help to get people uh situated. Uh because housing also keeps people uh here as well as business. So that'll be something the city will be looking into uh doing in the coming weeks and months. Um, but that's uh all I have for the council currently. Um, if we table this that discussion, um I know we're gonna have a discussion about aviation today as well, but that's uh that's all I have for myself. Any questions in the council, the people?
No, no questions for me, other than I actually do have one, sir. Uh so you're saying that we wanna rejuvenate businesses up north? And when you say up north, we're talking about Sandy uh like Grapesy, Polito, that area, correct?
Correct.
Um, and so this is gonna be once the uh new shop system has been uh the regulations for the BBB has come through, yes?
Correct. Yes, that's the that's the plan and to work in tandem with them, including with the going over the business plans and the you know, their business projections or any kind of you know, uh relevant documentation they have to support their applications.
And uh I'm I'm hoping this is gonna be uh taken under consideration for the mayor's office, uh at least uh you're not I'm I'm hoping you're not shunting this all onto the BBB, are you, sir?
No, 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 no. It'll be in conjunction with the mayor's office. All all of it'll be um within my knowledge and ultimately it it'll ultimately the decision will be on me. I'm just using them to a- as the resident experts of the government uh in business to have them advise as well as what they see as a good solid plan. And that will include um auditing capabilities, hopefully, and um the auditing powers of the BBB.
Excellent. Alright, thank you, sir. You're taking questions from the city as well, right?
Um, I don't know who said that. You mind coming to the podium?
Oh, yes. Hello, everyone. Uh I'm Tim Bradford. Um, I have a couple of questions about the businesses you will be uh have city funding uh in Sandy Shores and those areas up north. Uh with the city funding, are are you gonna push that those businesses and businesses and city not only just get stocked, but actually have active workforces in them? Cause there's a lot of businesses currently that are just stocked and not worked. What are we gonna do to make sure that the business does go out there? And stay out there instead of, okay, I just filled it up. It should be good.
Alright, so we're we could talk about it at two levels, right? The first level is um the capabilities and all of that of the UV. I won't speak to entirely. I mean, I can only speak to the um what will be allowed and what will be taken into consideration for the grants for these businesses. That is one condition that I have fought for since being the director many months ago in the B R in the B R B before this BBB came about. Um, was to have people there to greet you and to serve you. So those obviously, those business plans and those places that can do that are obviously gonna be held to a higher esteem in my decision. And I would and I would speak and I am not gonna speak entirely for the BBB. Lord knows there's uh representatives that can do that in in this in this hall. But um I would think that feel the same way.
I can speak a little bit on the uh so the the coming system uh and uh Mr. Breathway can correct me if I'm wrong here. Um, it there is going to be a an ability for people, for shop owners, business owners to make sure that um they're only able, people are only able to get items out of there if there's somebody working at that shop. Um, which is kind of a double edged thing. Um, but uh there are gonna be options for people to have self-serve still and all that sort of stuff. But it's going to be encouraging uh business owners to hire staff.
Yeah, that's our that's the main thing that I wanted to ask is, you know, it's, I know this is one of the mayor's things that he's gonna be getting to do. I I just know it also includes the BBB. I just wanna make sure that it those businesses will actually be ran instead of just stocked up because it it's disheartening to go into a business and see that they're stocked, but there's nobody there. There's no, there's no life in it. There's no one running it. And especially trying to get people to go up north, you you gotta push for that. And I just really wanna see the north grow and thrive, and I think that's a a thing that we should push for, especially if it's gonna be funded by the government.
Oh, one hundred percent. Yes, and that is one of the things that we'll be looking at. And a- as I stated before, anyone that that knows him that working in the bureau, that that is a key thing that I want to happen in the city.
I can either conform nor deny what you just said.
Uh, thank you. That's the only question I have for you.
Um, actually, this had brought me to a point that I had forgotten that I wanna make sure and it's good that I talked to you, the council and the people for this. So I in in my time in the council as mayor here, I have been, we have gone through a litany of discussions, uh legislation, ideas, everything. Um, and I do appreciate what the council has done. I appreciate what the city's done. I appreciate everybody that participates here. It's a testament to to the type of people that we have in the city. I think uh but I do have to point out that the purpose and the intent of what we can and can't do here, because I hear I get a lot of pushback of that we can't do stuff. Um, the answer that and I always say you can, we're just we're often looking to do this the things we can't do. So it is our job as a council to filter out those issues that we can affect in such a way that our legislation means something. And I'll give you an example of one of the best ones I could think of right now, and it affects everyone that came to the city council meeting today is the 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 uh the act included um having uh ramps to every government building, right? That is something that we did and we can affect, right? We can legitimately put ramps everywhere and we can legitimately go to every government building and do that. And we did it, right? You can look outside, that's something we can affect. Those are the type of bills that we need to look at in council to move to the judiciary because the judiciary is also there to filter, but it's after us. It's our job to present a bill that we can actually affect change with. And we can change things because we have and um and I just wanna make sure that that we understand that that's that's our job here. Um, and and that's it. That's that's all I have to say. Any more further questions from the people of the council? No? Uh, moving on, I'll give my time to myself to tell everybody else who can stand up and go to the front and talk about what they wanna do. Yep. Alright, so let's mix it up a little bit. Um who wants to go first?
Ooh, I do. I do.
There you go.
Uh Councilman Ashley Williams, uh District Attorney and all around swell guy. Um, yeah, I don't have uh much to report on other than um regulatory pushback from uh importing on fishing. Uh, it's got to a complete deadlock, so I'm not gonna be able to move forward on that. Uh, I am currently working on um just trying to get something written up and sent up top, but like the mayor said, that we have to look at what we can affect. Um, I am gonna be unable to affect this in a reasonable or real sort of way, so the best thing I can do is uh at least reach out to see if I can get the manufacturers to lower the prices on stuff uh because that's a little bit within my power to to handle. Um but other than that, uh yeah, not looking at anything else. Uh, we are looking for uh to get feedback from the citizenry about the um changes in laws that have recently come through. Um, uh you'll notice that there are uh new hunting regulations out there. I just kinda wanna make everyone aware of that. Um, please, please check the public library and make sure that you are uh uh in compliance when out hunting uh going forward. I I I well, so boo, I'll mark that down as one, one boo. Okay, um and that is all I've got. Any uh actually uh statements from citizenry about hunting and the new laws at all?
Yeah, actually, that's good. Let's open up some. Please, Miranda. Step to the podium and um you can you can get in the line so you don't have to just wait till the person's done.
Right, I'm Miranda Rights and there's the problem with hunting is all the animals are on the beach. The 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 hunting law should not come into effect until the animal problem is resolved. And that's the rangers. They need to get their head out of their butts and deal with it. Like the Palomino Highlands is a is a designated hunting zone. There's no wildlife there no more.
How would you elect it? How would you elect it? Okay.
They're all on the beach now and that's not a hunting zone. All the hunting zones is pretty much dead and the only the penal code should not come into effect until the wildlife issue is resolved.
Well, the penal, well, that wouldn't affect the zones whether or not where the animals graze now currently wouldn't affect the zones if they're written right, right? Like so
There's nothing there to hunt in the zones.
I know, but that doesn't, I I I'm I'm not debating that there's no animals there. What I'm saying is regardless of if there's animals grazing there currently at this moment that you're out hunting and you don't see one and the next person does, isn't something that changes legislatively. That is, that is like where they graze. So if they're not in the area that is designated by the rangers and the people in charge to make those boundaries, well, then they're just not there there at that time, but the le- the boundaries would still stand. So I would not see a reason why not to keep the legislation going whilst the animals migrate back to their normal habitat.
I I will make it illegal for animals to be on the beach. How's that?
They shouldn't be on the beach. It makes no sense to me.
Did you ask them to leave?
Um, Chief Justice, if you want to, hold on, hold on. If you wanna come up and
Nope, nope, I got nothing to add. That would be constructive.
That would be, that'd be constructive for stuff to add.
I mean.
Yes, Banner.
Can't hear you.
Speak up, Banner.
Excuse me, Robert Banner, uh Blaine County resident, Public Defense Attorney for City of Los Angeles, um
And all around swell guy.
Thank you, council for hearing me today. I have been in talks with um a ranger as of today who has um made suggestions on this uh whole hunting issue and the zones issue. His um reply was the zone map that they currently have is outdated by a retired ranger who is no longer in city. He has made suggestions and he was telling me that later on he would be more than willing to speak to the chief justice uh on this matter to clear it up as he said, in his opinion, everything from Route sixty sixty-eight north should be a hunting area as long as fifty um fifty feet, you said, Mickey? Uh fifty feet away from any roadway.
Alright, is it Mickey? Do you mind? I mean, I'd rather hear it from the horse's mouth.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
Would you mind coming up here?
Hey, good afternoon, everyone. Uh Sergeant O'Shea with the LSPD, uh head ranger, although I will just add the divisions in the LSPD are on freeze at the moment, uh so rangers aren't really a thing currently. Um, nor is a a couple of other divisions, but anyway, that's besides the point. The current hunting zones um that have been defined per the map uh were created by the former lead ranger Lori Hatchet uh with the best intentions. Um, at the time, I don't think it was really considered um exactly where animals would or wouldn't graze. Uh, the zones were selected on the basis of areas which we thought would be nice to hunt uh and also uh areas which were away from townships, uh civilian populations, uh areas of business, et cetera. Uh, obviously, in practical terms, um it's you know, not 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 the greatest um with respect to wildlife. So my suggestion moving forward would be to have the uh the border defined as Route sixty-eight from coast to coast. Anything north of Route sixty-eight is uh fine uh for hunting, so that includes things like the Zankudo Marshes, Ratam Canyon, Cassidy Trail, Calafia, Mount Gordo, um basically Blaine County. Um, the only the only real distinction being that hunting should not be conducted within fifty feet of any public road, uh any any highway, any road. Um, just so that the uh risk of collateral um damage to civilian life is uh minimized.
Uh you are far more lenient than I would be. Um, what about residents? Residential houses out near up north? What's the footage that they have to be uh cleared to shoot?
Uh, well, currently, we don't have any brandishing laws in Blaine County. Uh, brandishing is a city law. Uh, so there's the strictly, you know, legally speaking, there's nothing stopping people from brandishing firearms and shooting things on their property. Um, obviously, you know
One that is not their property, so you have a property there, I'm coming up to hunt. How close can I be to your house that will allow me before I can not shoot? Or rather, how far away do I have to be to shoot from your house?
Well, when it comes to uh uh housing and and property, I mean trespassing is a thing statewide, right? So I mean, if somebody is on somebody's property and hunting, the ma- maybe of the penal code, they're not breaking any hunting laws, but they're breaking trespassing laws, right?
Yeah, I don't wanna get to that far. I don't want to have people with their guns out on other people's property. What I'm
Yeah.
So so what I think is like a hundred yards from a road, five hundred or a hundred yard, a hundred feet, let's say, a hundred feet from a road, five hundred feet from residence. So that would give them, clear them far enough, give them such a birth that there wouldn't be there'd be very minimal chance of an accident or ricochet or the animal running across and then just shooting and happening to go across from his yard. That was kind of my thoughts. Um, and then find out that's in the legislation because that's something that I want in there.
Yeah, yeah. Um I I mean, ultimately, i- it's a case of exercising common sense as well, right? I mean, you can't define he you know, laws can be interpreted in in different ways, but ultimately it comes down to common sense. Um i- if you see a boar in the middle of Route sixty-eight, but it's fifty feet from a road you know, come on, like, it's it's not really the best place to be shooting things. Um use common sense, but I think the uh the zones are too specific. Uh, obviously, we can't control where where animals do or don't graze. I think everything north of Route sixty-eight is a good sort of like everybody can understand Route sixty-eight coast to coast, south of that is a no-no, north of that is fine. Uh, you know, not close to a road um and away from townships and residential areas. Um, the uh the 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 animal situation on the beach in Polito, um I personally took care of that. There shouldn't be uh as many animals grazing there now as there was. Um, so uh, you know, the 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 beach issue, I I have seen that firsthand. That particular beach should should now be clear of animals. Um, but again, exercise common sense. The the beauty of hunting is getting into areas away from you know, uh urban life, getting into, you know, the wildlife, getting into
Completely agree.
Getting into the nature, you know, getting into nature, immersing yourself, escaping and um, you know, hunting in in areas that are remote is is half the fun of it, you know, so um exercise common sense, but that would be my suggestion. North of Route sixty-eight and no more, no closer than fifty feet to any road.
Alright, I appreciate you coming up here and to the podium and explaining. I'd rather hear it from the from the person itself. Um, I think I appreciate Banner. Um, and I appreciate you. Thank you.
No problem.
Alright, any other questions uh from the people on this matter?
Not without a yield.
Alright, so who wants to go next?
Robert Daynob, councilman. Um, I really don't have any legislation that I wanna put forward. Um, just to give you an update, uh I am planning on talking to the deputy mayor and Mr. Breathway about writing up some legislation involving uh setting up some kind of a welcome wagon or welcome to the city kind of a organization, whether it be run out of city hall or a private organization, would have to be a discussion that I would have with these two gentlemen. I would love it to be something that was run out of city hall um involving the citizens, whether they be volunteers that wanna introduce new people to the city or whether it be someone uh a case where they are put on the city hall payroll. Uh, once again, this is something I would discuss with those two gentlemen uh when we write up the legislation.
What types of uh things were you about? Continue, please.
Um, basically, uh, you know, uh important pu- uh point out important things in the city uh as far as uh how to get around when you first initially come into the city, uh you know, where to find uh how the bank system works. Um, where the clothing stores are, uh basic introduction to the city. Um, just to uh, I I think a lot of people that come into a big city uh don't really uh know a lot about the the surroundings, don't really know a lot of people, um and having someone to introduce the city to them, I think would be a great help to encourage people to enjoy their stay in the city and wanna stay in the city.
So they would, logistically, they would come to city hall and say, hey, look, I'm new to the city.
Yeah.
Touch with whatever this liaison is and they would do whatever these events and show them these things?
Yeah, yeah, basically, that's a, I would I wouldn't necessarily say it's a tour of the city. Um, basically, just uh someone to help introduce them to the city. Uh, you know, it's uh whether it be uh, like I said, whether it be uh an employee of city hall or a volunteer who uh wants to help out their fellow citizens and uh and show them the ropes. You know, that that that's something that, like I said, would be in, have to be in discussion with those two gentlemen that I haven't even really talked to the deputy mayor about, but I did see in the uh file cabinet that he said if anybody needed any help with writing anything, he'd be happy to to help, so I do plan on discussing that with him.
Alright.
Um, it's and uh as far as an update uh on the BBB, um I would love to tell the citizens out there exactly uh what the uh the new flyer that went up uh today in the post offices about uh re-registering your business is all about. Um, unfortunately, I can't. Um because uh that was federally mandated, but uh I gotta tell you, folks, it, please make sure if you got a business that you, it it only takes two minutes to uh fill out that. They just need to know your full name, your postal code, uh, the business name and the location of the business. If you have friends that own businesses, please make sure that they get this in within the two week span. Um, we'll we'll bear the brunt of making sure that that is uh processed properly. But we need everyone just to follow through on that, please. I'm I'm sure this is going to be involving the new till till system. Um, so please, I ask that that you all, I'd hate to see anyone lose their business because they don't didn't see or didn't know about this new posting, so uh your help would be greatly appreciated as far as getting the word out to anybody that has businesses to make sure that they get that information into the BBB.
Uh, Bob, can I ask for a point of clarification? This is only for businesses that currently have tills, correct?
It's all current businesses in Los Angeles.
So so unreported businesses that don't have tills will be foreclosed?
If I could, I uh I was literally hired at the Tommy D'Angelo, I was hired on at the BBB literally last night and discussed this.
Come to the podium?
Yes, 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 excuse me. Excuse me, Connor.
Ah, yes, uh so discuss, uh discussed with Ms. with Mr. James last night, the uh the head of the BBB. Uh, in order to start enacting the uh the new systems with those that that till and whatnot, um he wants things simplified. So with that, uh first things first is uh he wanted to get a list of all active uh owners of businesses and active businesses within the state. Uh, and as such, uh as you, many of you probably have seen, there is a posting on the billboard uh about getting your your name, uh miss like Mr. Daynob said, which I believe is the the owner's name, the business name and the location. Uh, other than that, it's about it. Yeah, any any businesses that do not do that actively will be foreclosed upon.
Okay, so that's the the part I need more definition on. When you say foreclosed, uh
They will be closed out and like as in, like, people can take a fucking business that's uh that is closed. They they are completely closed out. The current owner is no longer the owner of that business.
Uh, okay, so again, goes back to my original point of this seems to primarily only affect businesses that currently have a till system in place, correct?
Location.
A fixed location. It's more a location. It's more
Office be closed?
Yeah, that's my point. Like, I don't think
It would be all businesses. It would be, it would be all all businesses regardless of till, any any location based business. So like, if you just have a fucking business that's let's say, like a design business and you don't actually have a an office or anything like that, it should not affect you. It's any business that uh that currently has a an office or a a workspace that you work outside of.
Okay, uh, thank you.
Alright, wonderful.
Alright. Thank you, John.
How about?
Are you, are you done, councilman?
I was wondering if there, I have a couple more things, but the if there's questions, I'd be more than happy to
Yeah, any more questions on this topic?
Um, it was more so to the beginning point of the welcome thing. Um, I think a simple printed out like sheet, um I can make something, like a little guide. We can print it out here at city hall. We just give it to people who are new to the city. That's all.
Alright, thank you.
Um, what about, like, I registered my business like four months ago. Do I just have to re-register or no?
Yeah, yes, yes.
Yeah.
It's a very, like, if you read the bull, if you read the poster on the bulletin board, it's literally three pieces of information needed. It's no more than your name, the business you own and its in its location, and that's that's it.
But my old paperwork I can throw away?
Yes.
Well, that's, okay, yeah.
Yes, so yeah, ev- everything will be redone. It'll be very, very simplified.
Not interesting, Dale.
Yes.
Oh, God, I'm so sorry.
I got a quick question.
Probably just all of our names, all of the names, right?
Could you speak up? Can you speak up?
Like, is there a paper I could grab to fax to them or do we need to be together to do that?
Uh, I, I honestly think if you just have the information on one sheet of paper with all the owners, it's probably gonna be easier for us to.
Okay, I, that's perfect, that's all I need to know, thank you.
Alright, anyone else have any questions? Alright, you said you had some more.
Yeah, the other one's just a question on decorum, since I'm kinda new at this. Um, I keep on hearing about the swear jar. Um, what exactly, uh, uh, is the swear jar?
We don't have a swear jar instituted yet.
And, and, and can I get a, can I get you guys to verbalize all the words that I'm not allowed to say because?
Let's have a discussion in closed chambers about this one.
Oh, are you sure? I think the people might want to hear the words that they're not allowed, I'm not allowed to say.
We'll, we'll find out when you say them.
And the, and the last thing is, uh, just on the, uh, new, uh, laws that were instituted in the penal code. I did notice that there is not a law in there, even though it was something that was suggested and mandated by the, uh, city council, uh, by the, the wonderful Benjamin Caputo. That, well, recommendation from city, city council, but it wasn't put in the penal code that we not fuck animals.
Well, uh, alright, so that is one word we're not gonna say.
I was, I was quoting what Mr. Caputo said, I was purely doing that in a quote.
That is something that should be commonly known and we should not have to discuss it, so we will not.
Should that not be codified though, because some people need that to be spelled out and written down.
Now, if you'd like to come up to the podium, Chief Justice, please.
Again, nothing constructive to add.
No, alright, then stop adding, please, because I, I really, we see eye to eye, Chief Justice, so let's just.
But he's sitting here standing, how do you?
You know, it, it's amazing, it's amazing, isn't it? Alright, who wants to go next?
I'll go.
Alister's up.
He wins, like always.
Wow, I mean.
No, I'm pretty sure I'd be.
Alright, Alister Humphries, while I have no legislation to present, there are, uh, the, at least one topic of discussion that I'd like to speak about. With the increase of, uh, population coming into Mirror Park, there's a, a lot of people that seem to, uh, now be moving into there. We have a community forming and I want to bring to the table uh, how people feel about a homeowners association starting out in Mirror Park.
Okay, okay, well, we'll let him finish, we'll let him finish, we'll let him finish, go ahead.
Uh, I appreciate the, uh, the reception, I, I think I see where it stands.
Alright, 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 it's not the time or place for that, alright, continue.
Uh, it wouldn't be anything, you know, too drastic, it would, uh, just be, you know, a, a small group of people. You know, keeping the area looking nice, making sure that everybody is okay.
People are there, mhm.
Well, eh, that, that would be for the neighborhood watch of Mirror Park. The, yeah, that, that, those are gonna be two separate entities. So, so there would be a homeowners association.
There's now, there's gonna be a community watch now, okay.
I have many concerns, continue.
Uh, oh, well, th- those are just the, the ideas, there's no real groundwork laid on him, but it's just some things that have been floating around that I wanted to, uh, bring to discussion. Uh, I now open the floor to anybody with, uh, with questions.
You're lucky I have temperament, I will allow the public to go first before the council. Does the public have anything to say about Mirror Park HOA and what was the other?
Uh, neighborhood watch of Mirror Park.
And homeowners associations, great, I love those.
Alright, council member, please.
Yeah, so, um, uh.
Get back up there.
Oh, um, back to the podium, okay.
Yeah, you're not done. So, so, in, in your, in your view, councilman, what, what does homeowners association supposed to be for?
Uh, so, the, the homeowners association of Mirror Park, it is just the, uh, community that love Mirror Park, wanting to keep it you know, looking nice and up to the community standards.
Up, up to standards, okay, uh, so.
Making sure, making sure everybody's laws are like lawns are trimmed, you know, trash being taken out on the proper days, on, on Tuesdays and Fridays. Uh, making sure that, you know, nobody's, nobody's leaving any junk everywhere, you know, trash is picked up out of the streets. Uh, no pollution in the lake, that sort of thing, you know?
And people like, you know, being too noisy, you know, that sort of thing.
Uh, well, I wouldn't necessarily say too noisy, there wouldn't necessarily be like a curfew or anything, you know, insulated.
Okay, I gotcha, I know where this is going, not yet though, that's what you're saying. Maybe in the future, okay.
We'll, we'll see in the future.
Watch is then gonna get into that, and then they're gonna be the enforcers for the, uh, homeowners association, is that correct?
Uh, n- no, not necessarily, the, the neighborhood watch would just be, you know, uh, a group of trusted individuals, a gru- a group of trusted individuals within the community that would, uh, keep an eye out for any suspicious activity and then, uh, alert the authorities in case of, uh, any wrongdoings.
Who decides if they're trusted individuals?
Uh, well, it would be decided between the people that live in Mirror Park.
Who would govern the people that decide the standards and when an incident happens and there's citizenry that are injured? What, what protections or what, what idea do you think they have, what jurisdiction do they have to act within, that a normal citizen couldn't act in the capacity of?
Well, you see, the, the neighborhood watch wouldn't be acting upon anything. They wouldn't be going after a criminal or they wouldn't be, you know, the ones transporting anybody that's hurt, they would just be making sure that, you know, if there's a hurt individual, they would just make sure they're okay, if they're not, they would, you know, they would phone the authorities.
Human beings that have empathy and sympathy.
It's people that care about the community that want to see it thrive, Mayor, I figured you would be one for that as well.
I, I live there, that's why I'm like an HOA.
Exactly.
What I don't see is that me, is it any different than a policeman, right, well, rather any different than the other citizen? A policeman could patrol the streets, I mean, me as a mere homeowner.
How often do you see, how often do you see police cars patrolling through Mirror Park?
As if they're police, that's.
Yeah, I ne- I never said that they'd be, they'd be patrolling like they're police.
Well, I mean.
I never once said that.
So does this mean that they'll just be looking out their windows at everybody that comes in the neighborhood, make sure that everybody that comes in the neighborhood belongs in the neighborhood?
Well, no, they, they, it would be a group of people that keep an eye out for suspicious activity.
Yeah.
Well, that, that's yet to be determined, that's up to your, you know, whatever you, you think would be deemed suspicious.
Homeowners Association bring down property values?
I mean, the value of Mirror Park is only rising at the moment.
Yeah, so why are you trying to stifle that?
But it would sti- he's, by his account, it would stifle that.
We, we want more people to move into the community.
Won this argument and I'm looking at the wrong person.
We want more people to move into the community, you know, Mirror, Mirror Park's a gorgeous spot.
I don't wanna live in a place with an HOA.
Uh, so then don't move into Mirror Park.
Oh, so, so you're, now you're keeping out Billy Falco.
Yes, that's what he's saying, Billy.
Let's keep that Billy Falco, I think that's.
This is, this is why it's open for discussion.
What, what, with, what, you're on board now for what?
I mean, if it's keeping Billy out, I mean, like, I'm just, I, I think, you know, Alister, this is a great idea, I, I think, uh, homeowners associations, though, they're A number one, and yeah, if you got your neighborhood watch keeping an eye out for riffraff, then yeah.
No, I just, I wanted to open it up for discussion to see, you know, eh, get thoughts on, you know, how people feel about it, see where people stand, but.
Has anybody seen my pitchfork?
As, as much as Ashley's adamant about keeping Billy out, um, I don't share the same sentiment. Billy already a citizen in the, in the city, so, um, I am still against this, I, I, I don't see the need for it, I, I'm the, the owners are humans, they can talk to each other, heck, they live next to each other, they have invested interest in there, including in their dollar bills as far as in their time. That they could talk to each other, if their yards aren't the right length and their paint's not the right color, I just don't see why there needs to be a homeowners association that by the account of the council brings down values of homes and in my account just brings no value to the situation. That's how I feel about it, any more questions from the council? Mr. Alister.
Nope, I'm all good.
Bet you are, but you wanna sit down, don't you, go ahead, sit down. Thank you.
Tidy little desk.
Thank you. No, you're welcome, alright.
To Bradford.
Gracias.
To Bradford firefighter in, of the city. Mister, uh, Councilman Alister, uh, the only statement I wanted to make is, uh, if you were to bring in an HOA, like, I was looking at property in Mirror Park as a possibility to the future, that actually deters me to live in Mirror Park. HOAs destroy communities and destroy, uh, eh, any, any sense of, any sense of, uh, I wanna do that, and it does degrade the value of neighborhoods, so I am definitely against any kind of HOAs. And any place that wants to keep out Billy doesn't wanna keep out, wants to keep out other people too, and that's not right.
Understandable, thank you for your input.
But it does also just.
I, I def- I definitely appreciate your input, thank you.
America, Alister.
I, I don't, I'm not the one that said they would keep out you.
That's huge slander.
Alright, order, alright.
Hello again, Thomas D'Angelo, uh, Mirror Park citizen, uh, of Nicola Place. I, I, I for one think an HOA could be a good idea simply for the fact that, uh, there could be HOA fees, maybe, uh, you know, a hundred dollars a week or something like that. Uh, and, you know, if, if every homeowner pitches into these HOA, uh, you know, dues or fees or whatnot, uh, maybe the Mirror Park Country Club, which is being enacted by Julie Rizzo, one of the other members of, uh, the Mirror Park, uh, you know, homeowners. Uh, that, those, those dues or fees or whatnot could, uh, you know, be used to, uh, help the country club in which every Mirror Park citizen is, uh, able to join. Eh, for, you know, various events, maybe, you know, a luncheon or, uh, you know, maybe a, a tennis tournament between the Mirror Park residents. Or, uh, you know, maybe even, you know, some sort of raffle for, so, you know, to win something, may- maybe even another home in Mirror Park if the dues, you know, increase or not increase, but, uh, you know, add up to a, a large amount over a period of time, you never know. I think an HOA could be a great idea for, for that alone.
Mister Mayor, I move we, we reinstate the stockade?
Do not, no. Uh, while I'm, I'm willing to have a spirited debate as we are neighbors, uh, as of late, um, about the validity of an HOA and usefulness of a neighborhood watch.
I, I may, may I, I, I do think neighborhood watch may be a little bit overboard, but an HOA could be useful.
How it all starts.
Is that how it all starts?
But, you know, it could, maybe, it, it, uh, who, who knows, it could keep the neighborhood clean. You know, maybe keep people's trash tidy, we already have a, uh, you know, a trash service coming around every Friday. Uh, you know, it, that could go towards paying to, uh, to have that, you know, on a more regular basis. Like I said, HOA dues could be a great thing for the neighborhood, all, that's all I'm saying.
Uh, and might I add, there's the, there's the cul-de-sac a street over that is still under construction, this could possibly help with getting those houses built as well.
It is very true.
Just bringing more homes to Mirror Park, more opportunities for people to start new lives.
As we are neighbors, let's, let's go through a situation. Let's say that my lawn is two inches too tall and you, as my neighbor, are the only one close enough to see it. Would you not just come tell me, hey, look, we would like that your, it'd be, you know, good for all uniformity of the neighborhood property value for you to mow your lawn this extra inch, wouldn't you just come tell me?
Well, of course, but what, uh, per se, what if I'm busy, uh, you know, doing other deeds or whatnot around the, the town? Why not have a dedicated individual who's, you know, basically main job is to go around with a clipboard and, and with a, maybe a yardstick or a, uh, or a, uh, you know, a, a stick to, to measure with and, you know, say, uh, wow, this is, this is half an inch too long, let's notate that on a piece of paper, put it in your mailbox, and, uh, then you can see that, hey, you got a notice of violation of the HOA's policy and code, and, uh, therefore you must cut your lawn immediately or be subject to a, uh, you know, monetary fine.
Who, who determines what's the proper length of the gap?
Well, the HOA, the HOA would be, you know, every, uh, every homeowner could, could come to an HOA meeting simply just like something like this, you know? There'd be a, uh, a council maybe, there, you never, you never know, there could be, there's a whole opportunity here, guys, that I think you're missing out on. You're looking at the negatives, alright, you gotta be glass half full, not glass half empty.
Well, so, have you watched grass grow?
Of course, I cut my yard every morning.
Yeah, so it takes a little bit of time for grass to grow, say a couple inches, right? Doesn't just happen overnight.
Well, yes, of course, of course.
In, in that time, wouldn't you think you'd find the time to come over and tell me, hey, look, man, your grass is getting a little long, just come down there and cut it.
Well, I mean. I mean, I'm, I'm not calling you out, Mister Mayor, I'm not calling you out, Mister Mayor, I haven't seen you move any, any furniture in yet.
Yeah, not yet, yes, I've, I've been busy, I do say.
I see.
But, but I did happen to see a note left and I wanted to, thank you for that.
Of course, of course, as you, uh, of course, as you are, wonderful, yes, I, I look forward to being yours as well.
With all due respect, Mister Mayor, Mister D'Angelo wouldn't have to come knocking on your door, letting you know that, hey, your grass is getting a little long, if you know that there's a homeowners association, you'll know the, you'll know the code that the lawns need to be up out. To, to keep the, the street maintained. But, but it, it wouldn't, it wouldn't, his, his property, his property.
Alister, Alister, I'm speaking. The point that I'm trying to make here is that time isn't all ending. If the grass took an inch to grow, surely you'd have a day to tell me and you'd be my neighbor and neighborly person to come over and speak to me about it. So I wouldn't need to get a letter in the mail, Alister, I'm still speaking, I'm still speaking. It wouldn't take a letter in my mailbox to tell me that I needed to do this regard, and a fine would be incurred if I didn't do it. That, that in itself, I, I think needs to be listed, needs to be looked at. I am not saying completely that I'm against it and I'll never hear it again or never talk about it, I'm just against it. I don't, and the HOA and our, and the, and the, and the neighborhood watch, I, I completely agree, does not need to be in there, that's too much. But maybe we can have a, an open discussion over some beers about an HOA in our neighborhood, I just don't feel that's something that should be discussed with the city council about, uh, one particular neighborhood.
Yeah, maybe you're right, Mayor, maybe you're right, Mister Mayor, I think.
Discussions about Sandy all the time.
Say again?
We have discussions about Sandy all the time, so you mean, discussions over one, discussions over one neighborhood shouldn't be happening in a city council meeting?
And a, a, a layer within the, the stands in between the police and the citizens, that's ridiculous.
I will say this, gentlemen, gentlemen, I think, I think we can go back and forth all day on this, I think, I think this should be tabled and, uh, I, I will get with, uh, you know, you fellow homeowners, uh, there in Mirror Park and we'll maybe get together a, uh, an informal meeting, not, uh, so, as, you know, so much of a, uh, of large gathering like this.
Yeah, yeah, you, you guys get uniforms too.
Exactly, exactly. Of course, of course, yeah, to own a home in Mirror Park, you must have the Mirror Park mobile, that is a requirement. Okay.
Stands the first time one of the citizenry said to table it something.
Yeah, pass, most can pass.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
And Miss, Miss McCaskill.
Then there were two, who's up next?
Alright, who's up next?
Doctor Cat.
Um, oh, I'm Doctor Cat and I don't have any legislation to bring up at this time, thank you.
Do you have, uh, any plans, any discussions you're gonna have, anything to report to the council?
Uh, not at this moment, but I'm thinking of some.
Fair enough. Alright. Any questions referred to council? No, any questions from the people?
Let's, let's just, we, we gotta get to the main event, sir, you, you know what's coming.
Yeah, alright. You have the floor there, Mister Falco.
Ladies and gentlemen, put your hands together for.
No.
Billy Falco!
Thank you, my name is Billy Falco, I represent the people as a city councillor. I bring an issue today of the utmost importance. I bring an issue today of the utmost importance. Judicial accountability. Last week, we discussed the.
Sound nervous.
Nope, I'm just taking my top. Last week, we discussed judicial transparency. And, you know, it was brought up, it's like, why don't you just talk to the, you know, talk to, to the Supreme Court Justice. So, I did. And the concern, and I now have additional concerns. It's been brought to my attention that, so last week we were just talking about the parachute bill, we're, you know, I'll put that aside for right now, we're gonna speak about the, um, the traffic light bill that, that the council unanimously passed in December. Um, as a reminder, it, it declared that intersections with a non-functioning or improperly functioning traffic light would be declared uncontrolled intersection. Didn't, didn't seem that controversial. But apparently the court, and I, and I'll let, and I will, I'll call up the, the justice himself to speak to it as well, uh, since he's here.
You're gonna subpoena me?
I don't need to. Uh, for, uh, the court has, has determined that because it's just driver's ed one-on-one, we don't have, we don't, it doesn't need to be codified. Meanwhile, the, the justice himself on many occasions has said, oh yeah, oh yeah, where, where is that a law? Point to it in, you know, in the constitution. So this is where that law is. N- numerous times, people have been pulled over, and again, we've had this discussion, we had this discussion when, when we passed the bill, that people are pulled over for going through a red light when it's red in all directions. Or when there's not a tra- an actual traffic light there. The importance of bills that are passed by city council being, you know, progressing through the process and not being held up because at the, just at the whims of the judicial system, it, it is paramount. The the constitution states that the at, you know, after a bill is passed, the, the, it will go for judicial review to ensure that no rights of citizens are impinged upon. And then unfortunately is afterward is where it states the justice may incorporate those laws. And this is where it hinges on may. So you would think that a judge would defer legislative power, you know, legislative intent to the people. But in this case, the, the judge has just decided that, no, I'm just gonna dis-. Which is their right, but is this really the exercise of judgment that the justice is exercising? Is this really what the people want? You know, we passed that bill for a specific reason. And the judge is holding it up because he just says it's common sense. We codified something for a reason. The city council exists for a reason. I want the citizens to know that their vote for city council matters. We are here to represent the citizens' interests. The judges are not elected by the people. We are, and so is the mayor. So it's important that the citizens' voice is heard and that the laws reflect that. It's, you know, of the people, by the people, for the people. Government serves at the consent of the governed.
Are, are you, you still got more, or?
I, I, I mean, I could go on forever, but I, but I, I yield. Yield.
Normally I would ask the council or the people, but actually I would like Chief Justice to come up and speak to this matter.
Did, did you subpoena me?
You don't have, uh, no, Chief Justice, I'm asking you.
Okay. Well, one, one of the things that, uh, Sure, sure. One of, one of the things that Mister Falco brought up in the, uh, in his argument was that people have been pulled over for running through red lights that were red on all four sides. Um, Mister Falco, you said that, correct?
Yes.
Okay, would that be considered running through a red light?
It is not.
I'm, I'm sorry?
It is not, as long as you treat it as a four-way stop.
It is a red light, sir. Did they drive through a red light when the light was red?
If it's red in all four directions.
By, by your argument, you said yes, because it was red on all four sides.
If it is red, you asked a question, let me answer. If it is red in all four directions, then it's a non-functioning intersection.
Uh, do you work for the city, uh, the, the city, uh, traffic?
The law very, did you read the law that we passed? Cause it very clearly states.
Sir, sir, I'm, I'm, I'm looking at the standing law currently.
That if it's not functioning as it's supposed to.
How do you know it's not functioning as it's supposed to?
Because that's not how traffic lights work. It's supposed to, to allow the smooth movement of traffic.
Okay, uh, are pedestrians considered traffic, sir?
They are.
Oh, okay, so when all the four lights are red, do you not notice the little, the little green man that says pedestrians can walk? We, we've gone through this several weeks a- at a time. Uh, you, 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 you don't notice that because you're driving, right? So you're not paying attention to that.
Also, not to be pedantic, it's really eight because there's a always turn left, uh, cause that only makes it the intersection, that's a green status on that as well, so this is a little pedantic point.
My, my point is, if all the lights are red, there, there is a reason. It's not that the lights are non-functioning. Uh, if the lights are. Oh, okay, do you work, again, do you work for traffic control management and all that stuff?
Oh, again, this isn't what the bill says.
Do you, do you or do not, sir?
Simply states.
Okay, I, I'm telling you, I'm, I'm.
That if it's not. No, no, because we're looking at the speci- at this specific bill and this specific.
Okay, okay, I'm going to explain to you why, again, slowly. Uh, I don't have any crayons to help you out here, but I can try. Um. Great.
That's a great.
Super. Um. What, what I'm trying to say is, when the lights are all red in every direction, it's to allow pedestrians to cross safely because some people have a tendency of blasting through those lights and treating them like they don't exist. Or some would even say that they, you know, act as if they don't function, when in fact they do. The lights are working perfectly fine. Uh, any, any complaints about non-functional traffic lights should be taken up with, with the city itself. Uh, maybe, maybe some sort of, uh, you know, department that deals with city infrastructure. Um, when all lights are red, it is for pedestrians crossing.
That, that's not a thing.
It absolutely is a thing.
So you're saying that this traffic has to stop in all directions?
Not in every, not in every intersection. It's however, it's however the, the city planners have enlisted.
No, that's not what this bill states and that's not the intent. The, the bill states that, and, and it's very simple language and, and we chose that language on purpose.
Which I appreciate because I know sometimes the big words are fancy, but what do they mean, right?
We specifically stated that a non-functioning
Mm-hmm.
traffic light be declared uncontrolled.
Define non-functioning again?
As defined in the bill.
What is non-functioning, sir?
As defined in the bill that was unanimously passed.
Can you read it to me? Can you read it to me right now?
As Chief Justice, it is your job.
What is the bill? Tell me, tell me.
Excuse me, I'm speaking. As Chief Justice, it is your job to evaluate the bills as they are presented to you.
Right, which I did.
You are derelict of duty.
I'm derelict of duty?
Yes.
So am I evaluating the bill or not?
That's a big word.
You are showing a dereliction of duty in not passing and not reviewing the bills of the people.
Again, reviewing and evaluating, you're using that word. You know what that word means, sir?
You are to review and evaluate based on the constitutional.
Right, right. Okay, which I, I have, I have done so.
And it, does the bill infringe on any constitutional rights of the citizen?
It, it, it infringes on the laws that we have in the state of San Andreas.
It does it.
And, hold on, stop for a second, Billy. Billy, just hold on.
I, we're going in circles.
You're whispering. Um, what, I, I'm gonna just talk. You're whispering, sir.
Sorry, I'm whispering, but, um, we need to bring the tone down, alright, but I want this discussion to happen. I want the people to see it. But we need to tone down the volume, alright? Alright, continue.
Uh, I'm gonna make a point here on constitution out. So, and Billy's making a point about it infringing on a person's rights. That's what the kind of constitution does. It limits the rights of our citizenry.
No, it doesn't. No, it doesn't. That's not the purpose of the constitution.
Is that guy an assassin?
It one hundred percent does. It defines and limits the rights of our citizens.
Thank you, appreciate it.
The laws are what we follow in order to make sure that we have a working society, but the constitution by its nature does limit our rights. Cause we can't freely go shoot somebody.
Exactly. The, the grants are only granted by the state. The state grants us rights. They're not inherent.
Excuse me?
We wanna say that they're inherent, right? We talk about it that way, but if push comes to shove, they're granted to the state. Every right we have is granted.
You're saying this in front of the media where, where it's on the record that the, our rights are not inherent.
Our rights are inherent in feeling, but they are granted in the state. The state grants us the right to.
That, that is the reason for laws, sir.
No, these are God, no. The purpose of law is to limit government. And in some cases, the.
Sir, can you explain to me how the government is, uh, limited with the fact that you are not allowed to shoot a random person down the street at any point in time? Explain to me first degree murder and how that limits the government.
Life, that's life, liberty and happiness.
Oh, how does that limit the government, sir?
It does. The point being that this bill does not infringe on any constitutional rights.
It does, sir.
No, it doesn't.
It absolutely does. The safety of pedestrians, sir.
No, no.
Pedestrians still matter? Is that what you're saying, in front of the media?
I remind you.
You want that on record? You want that on record?
I remind you.
Sir, do pedestrians matter?
This bill, the purpose is, and, and you said it yourself earlier today.
What did I say?
That this is driver's ed one-on-one.
Okay, did you agree with that?
I did.
Okay, great.
Excuse me, I'm speaking. An uncontrolled intersection is treated as a four-way stop. And that's all the law declares.
Okay. Now you said an untreated, sorry. Non-function is not.
I'm gonna clar- I'm gonna clarify.
I, you have to, because you keep backtracking. I'm a little confused here.
A non-functioning traffic light.
Okay.
Means that it's an uncontrolled intersection and that is the entire content of the bill.
Okay, great. So again, when the light is red in all directions to give pedestrians the right of way, in your mind, or, or sorry, as the bill states, which you've clearly, uh, quoted back to me, uh, is that somehow the light is non-functional? Because pedestrians, what, should they just run across the street whenever they have a chance?
When there's a specific light indicating they should go, so they can go.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay, and they do, when all the traffic lights are red.
That's not germane to the bill. The bill simply declares, and you know, the bill simply declares that when a traffic light is not functioning.
You're just repeating, sir. I heard you. I heard you, yeah, yeah, yeah. When the light is not functional, I'm explaining to you why the light is functional.
Excuse me, I'm speaking again.
I know, you keep doing that. Your voice is great.
When a bill, excuse me, when a traffic light is not functioning, it, it shall be declared an un- an uncontrolled intersection. That's the whole bill and that's all that we should be discussing here.
But that was not your argument, sir. Your argument was that people are getting pulled over when all the lights are red, therefore it's non-functional.
Yeah, but you know what? That's not what the bill says. We as a council voted and you are spitting in our faces.
Whoa, whoa.
Oh, I hear that's not. Record show he's not literally spitting.
I mean, I could, I, I.
Maybe some of the councilmen would be, or women and everything, we into that.
Nah, I don't, eh.
I don't judge. But, but not current.
In seventeen seventy-six.
Oh, my Christ.
The Continental Congress voted to throw off the chains of monarchy to create a representative government.
Am I the king?
For the people, by the people. Yes, you are.
Oh, thank you.
No, he's, he's not the king.
No, 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 he declared it. I am the king. You've heard it all here. The media hears it.
His lordship.
You act by judicial fiat with no accountability to the citizenry.
I disagree entirely. I actually am protecting the citizens from people like you passing these bills to make the city a little bit less safe. Allowing folks to run through red lights at. I, again.
Unanimously voted for this bill.
Okay, I'm gonna.
That does not infringe.
Okay.
Can we gavel, gavel for a second?
Sure, sure.
What do you mean, gavel, gavel? You, you want to ask a question, actually? Ask a freaking question.
Gavel, gavel, sir, gavel, gavel. Sir, gavel, gavel.
So I'm respectful to the gavel, sir.
No, it's not, it's not over yet. That's what you're getting at.
No, no, um, uh, I do have a question for, uh, the Chief Justice. Your role in, in laws, uh, or anything we pass to the city council is to do judicial review. Can you explain briefly what judicial review is?
Absolutely. Uh, I am what would be considered the final check and balance between, uh, bills that get, uh, passed along to, uh, judicial assent, let's say. Uh, where I va- like, as, as some would say, evaluate and review the bill uh, i- in an attempt to make sure that A, it makes sense and B, it's something that would actually be, uh, needed and promote uh, the, uh, or be in the best interest and safety of, of the people of the entire state of San Andreas. Um.
Would you say that also includes?
How would you define the best interest and safety?
Billy, Billy, Billy. Would you also say that includes the verbiage to, uh, better help the people not have loopholes in their laws as well? So you'll actually.
Absolutely, absolutely. I am trying to make sure that bills are sound and, uh, that there are no loopholes, as you said. Uh, as, as I pointed out before, uh, early on in your career, Mister Mayor, you pointed, uh, oh, sorry, you passed the, uh, big business, uh, bill, which was a, uh, tax act for the big businesses. Uh, and, uh, I, and I denied that, uh, that assent, um, because it was too broad. There were a lot of loopholes. And, uh, a lot of it just generally didn't, uh, it wasn't completely formally, uh, or, or, uh, firmly fleshed out, right?
Well, yeah, your point of view. I mean, we, we will disagree on some of that. I concede that.
Sure, sure, but there, there were some things that I had issues with and I explained to you what the issues were. Um, and, you know, if, if you were to come back with an amendment that was, uh, nice and crisp and everything made sense, I, I would have no issues with that.
Yes, but that, and again, during that whole process, the BBB and all of its things changed that law, so that law is put.
Sure, sure, but at the time, at the time.
But at the time, correct. And, and I will state to Billy, the point being is, yes, that's the checks and balances. Um, I do not intend to rather stand the position of the council in it in relation to the judiciary. I'm trying to express to Billy, at least to some respect, that I, what, what did I coin, Vinny, that is between you and me, I am the gas to your break. So I am here to give you stuff to look at, to review, to have dissent, to agree with, to amend to, uh, the constitution, the constitution. That being said, this issue clearly needs to be stated and handled outside of this. I wanted the public to at least know that there is a judicial process that happens and there is checks and balances.
Absolutely. And, and again, with respect to this bill specifically, uh, while I understand that this would be very beneficial to drivers who think they know what a functioning red light is or not, as they do not work for the, uh, city's infrastructure, uh, department. Uh, I am, uh, the reason why I have not passed it is because I'm looking out for the interest of all citizens, uh, whether they be drivers or pedestrians. Um, you know, whether or not you think personally that the light is not functioning, uh, is not the same as to whether or not there is a traffic, uh, control device at that particular intersection.
Now, um, just broadly, cause I wanna end, uh, we're running out of time here.
That's manifest disregard of the law. Are you familiar with the concept of manifest disregard of the law, Your Honor?
Hold on, Billy, 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 I'm trying to get through this. We're gonna have, you're, you're gonna get your time with the judiciary soon enough. Um, Judi- uh, Chief Justice, was the intent, um, of the judiciary having unilateral control over the constitution and its verbiage and its, um, and its instatement in the very beginning of the city establishment used to, uh, better, uh, was in the idea of, uh, the betterment of the city?
Uh, I would imagine so. To the best of my knowledge, it's always been the, uh, the MO of the Department of Justice as well as, uh, in my position as Chief Justice to, uh, make sure that we have a state that is, uh, that is governed and, uh, legally sound.
Alright. Do you see any reason currently to change the, the, um, the structure of that, uh, and the reason for that decision earlier on in the city in relationship to its current state?
Uh, you're asking me if I think that my position should be governed?
No, I'm asking, do you think, do you think it's the procedural, um, capabilities and powers you have currently should not be changed?
I mean, I feel like that, that would be a bit of a biased answer. I don't think I could give an unbiased answer. I personally don't see the issue.
I mean, your decisions are by itself.
I, I, I would say that I consider myself to be very level-headed and very even keeled, uh, despite what some counselors may, may think. Um, I, I look at things at a much broader scope than things that may affect me personally. Um, you know, I don't see the, the harm in stopping at a red light if it's red on all four sides. Uh, you know, uh, pedestrians should have the right of way as well. Um, because if they did not, then they would be subject to, uh, potential jaywalking infractions, uh, at a moment's notice. Uh, much, much like anybody running through a red light. It, it's all about fairness and equality.
I completely agree. But it, it would be reasonable to, to come to the conclusion that it'd be a conflict of interest for us to pass a bill and say, hey, look, we want to unilaterally remove your power. I present you with a bill that says you have no more power. Pass this bill. That seems, for a reasonable person, that seems a little ridiculous, doesn't it?
I mean, I, I, I don't know how you would, you would implore that. You would have to appeal at a federal level, I, I imagine. Because why would I pass a bill to remove my own ability to, to have that final say?
Yeah, and that's my point that I'm getting at. That any of this, um, dissent on the current system that is in place that was established from the very beginning in itself would be a conflict of interest for the judiciary to decide, leaving no one to decide between us. Meaning, this is something the council should not tackle. It is something that, it needs to be tackled above the council, is my point. Would you not agree? If there is any dissent of that, of the system, that the person that has the, uh, rather, let's just say, the plaintiff, if the plaintiff was, uh, presenting that, they should, they should then present that to someone besides the Chief Justice or this council. Would you not agree?
I'm stating-
Not you, Billy, not you, Billy. Chief Justice.
Sorry, what was the, what was the question?
The question is this decision and this, this discussion of, um, matters that would unilaterally remove your power that has been established at a level, at a state level, is not something the council should be taking up. It is something that should be talked higher than the council. Is that correct? Would you, would you agree with that?
I, I, I would believe so.
If there was any dissent, rather.
I, I would believe so.
Okay, alright. So let's just leave the matter at that and move on with that decision. There's checks and balances here, Billy? Unfortunately, if you have that issue, it's above the council. I don't, I don't think it should be handled.
I'm sorry, I, I disagree.
Then that disagreement-
That's not a check and balance at all.
Well, again, again-
That actually takes power away from the legislative body.
I agree that-
It's a minus.
Well, again, at the beginning of the council meeting, I stated, we need to work on stuff we can affect, and if not, go to the people that can change that. The council can't change that. Because I cannot pass a bill and present it to the Chief Justice, hey, look, you don't have any more power again.
No, but we can pass a bill and then take it to the federal government.
No, we can go to the federal government first.
For the record, can I, to that point, sir, can I, can I bring up, uh, the fact that a couple of months ago, you said you passed the parachute act?
Uh, Counselor, Counselor King did, yes.
Okay, and then, uh, last week I asked you specifically, have you spoken to the federal government about implementing parachutes? And you said no, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so when you pass a bill, when do you plan on actually speaking to the federal government?
When it's in effect.
Okay. Sure, as, as the, the owner of a supposed flight school, should you not have had that conversation with the government?
I've been having conversations all along.
Have you? So when last week I asked whether or not you spoke to the government about it and you said no, was that, was that a lie, sir?
You're, you're, you're jumping topics. We're speaking about the parachute.
I, I'm explaining why, why you're saying that, you, you said you've spoken to the government though, correct? Like, this is the same situation. If there was an issue, you would speak to the government.
Once again, we represent the citizenry.
I agree.
The Constitution directly states, and so, uh, Mr. Mayor, my contention is not of the system. It's that, it is not that the, that the justice is not following the law and is not properly implementing, is not properly acting in their role in the system.
And I'm not debating that, that you have that feeling. I know that's not a concern. I'm merely stating, currently as it stands, the system that is in place, it's been in place since we've been here-
No, the system is fine. The actor is wrong. The person charged with implementing it is not following the law.
Every-
That's the difference.
Well, then, like I said before, the council cannot, is not, there is nothing that gives us the ability, nor, like I stated before, it's conflict of interest for us to, he cannot rule on a bill as the only Chief Justice, only, only justice that, that takes away his powers. It's, we cannot present him with a bill that takes away, and say, hey, look, is this constitutional? Oh, well, of course it's gonna be biased, of course it's in a conflict of interest. I, I am moving, just to not table this, because I, I think, again, we've been around this circle so many times here. This issue is not for the council to decide. If there's a system that is in place where there's a, and I'm just spitballing here, and I don't want to continue on this, but I'm just gonna say it. If there was more Chief Justice, a Supreme Court, something like that, that did that effect where we could review and send stuff up and down through circuits between whatever circuit the other, you know, counties have, then we could do that, but we don't have that. So if you have any issues, I think it's, I, I, it's above the council.
Billy, did you, did you want to just like vote to sanction the Chief Justice? Is that what, is that what you want?
No, 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 no. I don't even want to go-
I don't. Why not?
I just don't, do we, wait, stop. Do we have any more issues or concerns about? About, about this, um, council?
I, I am free to answer questions from any counselor.
I'd just like to say, as a councilman, that I, I think that, that hopefully I heard we're gonna have a, a closed session next week. And we should properly define what the council can uh, do to help the citizens and what's out of the council's hands and not waste our time on things that the council can't affect. I mean, I appreciate Billy's argument. Um, I, I, did you show your dictum, by the way?
I think he's, he's got that, that.
Okay, I wasn't sure if he showed dicta, I'm sorry.
Oh, he's got more than one now.
Yeah, I, I wasn't sure if he showed it or not, because I couldn't see it. But, uh, but anyway, like I said, I, I just think that, uh, I think our, our time and the citizens' time would be uh, better utilized if we concentrated on things that we have an opportunity to affect the citizens that we represent. Instead of arguing over things that clearly aren't in the scope of the city, of the city council.
And I, I appreciate that. And, and the purpose of, of bringing forth this discussion today was to ensure that the citizens were aware that, you know, of, of the situation and, and heard it themselves.
That the bad actor is me, right?
You are the-
That you are engaging in manifest disregard of the law.
Well, alright.
Okay. This is democracy manifest, sir. I'm going to have my nice Chinese meal.
Alright, um, moving on. Thank you, Chief Justice.
Anytime.
Sure, sure it was fun.
I yield my time.
Alright, any, so I move to the people. Do, do the people have any concerns about anything in the city? They'd like to come to the podium and speak to the council. Please line up and say your name and your case.
Hello. Rajesh Gupta, private attorney at law. How's it going?
For, for what, uh, company?
Can, can you, can you speak up, please?
Yeah, I'm, I'm yelling, so, can, are you, can you hear me?
It must be me, it must be me. Continue, sir.
It's alright. When you get older, Mr. Mayor, it's good, hearing, it's good. It helps out.
Yeah, they're, they're perfect. It's all this wind, but, thank you, I appreciate you, sir.
Yes, 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 no worries. Alright. Now, buongiorno, my, my council members, as they say back in Italy, where I'm practically a native after I've been there a week. But anyhow. So, I thought we would, I would bring up some actually important matters, uh, since, you know, we've, we've been babbling so much about stuff and tabling so many things. I wanted to bring some past stuff up that I think is very important that was tabled to see how you would rule on it today. So, a, a matter of weeks ago, we, we, there was a discussion regarding the, uh, buying back meth from the streets to police. The police would buy the meth off people to get the meth off the streets. Yes, yes, I think, I think we should go over that again. That's clearly the most important topic going on nowadays. So-
Do you, why, do you have a bunch of meth?
No, of course, I, I don't have it. No, I, of course not, Mr. Mayor. No, I, I have no friends. I'm, I'm a sad guy. She, she, she may, she, excuse me, I'm talking. Mr. Williams.
Councilman, Councilman Williams.
Nah, whatever. Listen. I think it's of utmost importance, because who knows how much meth is on these streets? And we must fight against the drugs by paying people to give us their drugs. And that's how Ronald Reagan would have wanted. What does want it?
But clearly you know how many, how much drugs are out there. You're asking-
God, this sounds familiar.
I don't know how many drugs, but probably a lot. And we must continue the war against them as RR, as double R, R squared, like, would like it. Yes.
Alright, uh, does any of the council have any questions, Mr. Gupta?
No, just a statement. We're, we're not buying drugs. We're not buying drugs.
Alright.
Uh, uh, that's, that's the people's choice, alright? You know, you can't talk for all of the-
Okay, so, my, my, my first question, my first question to you is, where are your drugs?
I don't have any drugs, except a little bit of prescription antibacterial, uh, drugs. Uh, you know, a nasty infection in my ear.
Okay, alright, okay, okay.
What did you do on it?
Next question.
It's your what?
She's a weasel. We don't even hear about that stuff here. Uh, next question would be, you, you said you're an attorney. What kind of law do you practice?
All.
All types of law? A lot of criminal law? Do you practice criminal law?
I do. I haven't had many cases recently. Maritime, I'm a little rusty in-
No, did, you say criminal, you did do a lot of criminal cases?
Uh, no, not in this state, but generally, yes. This state, there's public defenders, so no one really wants to pay for that. I did a couple-
You did a couple, go ahead?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Was the majority of your criminal cases, drug cases, and it was meth? Have you or your colleagues in your, um, institution had a lot of meth?
No, we, we mostly do a lot of corporate law and wills and, 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 you know, stuff like that, so we don't- People don't write meth in their wills usually, it's because, you know, it doesn't-
Best interest in meth, and that's my-
I have no vested interest. I care about the people of this state, alright? And I want something to actually go through this council for once without being tabled, so we should pass the buyback meth bill. Yes.
I think we passed the bill, the, uh, was that, uh, was that chief councilman, chief meeting, was it two? We, we passed, lost. What are you implying? That we don't do anything?
No, I don't imply that. I know you talk a lot.
It's me, I'm the problem.
No, you're not the problem, Chief Justice. You're fantastic.
Surely, you, you, you as a lawyer know you must talk a lot, so you talk a lot.
I do talk a lot.
Alright, so, so in- Go ahead, go ahead, council member, go ahead.
Go ahead, Mr. Denal.
Yeah, Mr. Patel, uh, a couple of questions for you.
My, it's, my name is, is Rajesh Gupta.
Gupta, okay, I'm sorry.
It was close. It was very close.
Yeah, I'm terrible, I'm terrible with names.
It was not remotely close.
Yeah, I, I know. Mr. Smith, uh, what, uh, what is your, uh, end goal, uh, for this?
Uh, that the bill gets passed, and then the, yes, the meth gets off the streets.
Okay, okay, well, I got some questions for you, um.
Yeah.
You, you, your law firm, you are the, the founder of the, the business, correct?
Well, I'm one of three. It's a partnership.
So, so you have a little business background?
Uh, yes, I suppose.
So, so as a businessman, if you knew you had a steady, steady stream of income, a source of income coming from someone, um, would you just, uh, continue manufacturing that, uh, amount to take care of that customer, one customer? Or would you make a lot more so you could take care of other customers while maintaining a steady, steady stream of income?
Uh, listen, I'm a lawyer. I don't manufacture anything, so, so I don't have a-
Think about this long with a lawyer's point of view.
Yes, but I, I run a law firm, so that's how I think, you see. I, yeah.
Well, he brings up a good point. He brings up a good point, though.
Yeah, you're gonna flood the city with, with meth and-
No, I would not flood the city with any. I'm not a fan of floods, so I'm not very good at swimming, you see.
What, what, what would happen would, is, what would happen would be, the city would become the number one buyer of meth. Is that what you want in your city? The city to be the number one consumer and purchaser of meth and amphetamines?
Well, if the city is the number one purchaser, meaning the government, uh, then that would be interesting. But, be, you know, uh, no, of course not. The city would buy it and then dispose of it. It wouldn't take it. Or are you insisting that if you bought it back, you as representatives of the government would take meth?
People take some weird shit, man. Stuff, I'm sorry. I, I apologize, council. I cussed right there.
Oh, 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 they can do it, the council can.
The, the mayor can do it, and the council will not.
Oh, yeah, okay, whatever.
That's good, Doc.
If you know, if you know your powers, you know what you can do.
You're full of shit.
If you read, if you read the, oh my god, if you say that again-
Oh, come on.
Jesus.
Councilman.
Alright, moving on.
I'm offended these-
The city, the city will not, ooh, censure who? Motion to censure who?
You.
Me?
Oh, the, the mayor.
There you go. Well, I don't actually, that's not your full power, but I'll, I'll, I'll let you roll with it and then I'll just shut it down. That's fine.
And he vetoed censures of himself?
Well, he can't vote on it, but he's gotta get second first.
No, I said he actually needs, actually needs at least two backers anyway. I wasn't serious.
Yeah, and it would just be like noting in the-
Wasn't serious. Mr. Falco would get nothing serious.
Alright, uh, do you have any more issue? We will, the city will not be moving to buy meth and amphetamines currently. We don't even have the infrastructure to stash it, store it. I haven't talked to the police about it. Don't even have a payment structure, nor do I feel like paying, uh, criminals for making meth and amphetamines.
Okay, but can we at least get an actual vote? So we, you know, it's unofficial?
There's nothing to vote on. There's nothing to vote-
Good.
There's no bill.
No, oh, oh, that's right. That's true. Very right.
Bring us thirty signatures.
Thirty signatures. Billy, I don't think, Councilman Falco, I don't think you've ever gotten a single signature for your bills. I don't want to hear it, alright?
Well, that's the, uh, that's the law that I'm actually due by, to your lawyers, you know all that. Any other questions?
Yeah, yeah, alright. Um, no, I think I'll, I'll, I'll save the, uh, screwing animals bill for next time. We can look back over that one another time.
Don't fuck animals.
No, I bet you would, no.
What, me?
Alright, okay.
Who, who's, who is speaking?
Attorney General?
I'm confused.
You know that's the Attorney General. He hasn't announced himself yet.
It's, it's Putin. Everyone else is-
I don't know who that is. No, he's been, he's been gone for a while. I don't know what he looks like these days.
Looks like some old man.
Let him speak, let him speak.
I shamble these hallways you just don't see. Good afternoon, counsel. Attorney General Benedict Caputo. Good to see most of you here. I have, I have just a statement. I will not be taking questions. Forgive me for being a little late today, uh, but based on what I had seen, uh, had I arrived sooner, it would have served to only infuriate me further. The fact that we have a Chief Justice who has the best interest of the state in mind should be lauded, not criticized. This man recently put through a thoughtful and careful adjustment to the penal code of the state to promote fairness for all the people in it. This man is the GOAT between, between us and the federal government, a job that is not easy at the best of times, and even more so when being asked to advocate for changes put forth that are often nonsensical. The suggestion that the Chief Justice must, must abrogate his responsibility just to satisfy the strange requests is ludicrous and insulting to the office. This council should direct its efforts to making changes that benefit all people. Putting together bills that it can enforce and enact at the city level, the state level, rather than trying to force through changes that require divine intervention from upon, upon high, or so convoluted to the point of absurdity. Learn to walk before you run and focus on what you can change rather than wasting week after week arguing nonsense. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Mr. Caputo. I know you said you wouldn't take any questions, so I'm just gonna make some statements on top of your statements, so it'll be like some meta-statements for you. I completely agree, and as I stated in the beginning of this meeting, that the council should be focused on things that we can change here. Um, I do agree that the, the, uh, the Chief Justice is, in the, in the DOJ is tasked with a very daunting task. And I have looked over the new penal codes that- the Chief Justice is, in the, in the DOJ is tasked with a very daunting task, and I have looked over the new penal codes that are coming out, and I, they have done, and, and I realize the prosecution, the police, everybody's been working on it, and I am grateful that we have a group of people that are willing to put their time forward to create a better, uh, and, and more, and more, uh, steadfast, uh, or more, more, more adhesible or feasible ju- uh, system. Um, with all that said, I do agree with him on that. I do disagree on personal issues that, that pertain to certain matters in court that we will not discuss here. But, that being said, um, anyone else have any statements or comments, or, rather, no questions, but statements on Caputo's statement? The council, go first. No?
Here, here.
Moving on. Anyone else have any other questions, concerns, um?
This is for the council.
No, not for the council, for the people. We'll get this thing closed out.
Yeah, no, let's not say the people. People got anything for the council, anyone?
No, no. Alright. Mean adjourned.
Well, that was kind of you.
Alright.
Very unexpected.
Canyon.
It's quite a leap. Well, that scene.
See here.
Certainly, so, to see how our judicial system works.
Yeah, come on, yeah.
I wasn't expecting that either.
My lawyer.
See what happens, Caputo, when we step down? Look at this, look at council now, look at the state of it. Constant bickering and childish antics. We were the glue that held this place together.
Somebody needs to put baby adults in the room, right?